Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. Let me ask you, how many people are from Wise County? Holy moly, that's amazing. I didn't expect. Alright. How many people grew up here from more than thirty minutes away? Phil. Alright, well, we are glad you are here. This is Wise County Conservatives. This is our, I believe, our fourth meeting. This is a special meeting. This is not our normal meeting. But this is a special one because we get to have a special guest, address this about an issue that we all want to understand. And so what we're gonna do is go ahead and get started. We always start with prayer. Pastor James, let's get out there.
Well, welcome, everybody. If you'd like to just have your stand if you wouldn't mind. We're gonna pray tonight, and you can be seated right after prayer. Father, we, you got more announcements after prayer?
Yes.
Okay, good. One of the, real quick, the two things I would like to mention. The first is we have the National Day of Prayer coming up on May the sixth. If you're in Wise County, we're going to be doing an indicator at the courthouse on the southwest side. We're gonna be operating it and running it. We would invite you to come on May sixth at noon. We're gonna start right at noon. We're gonna pray for our nation, pray for our local levels, our school boards, all the different things that we have going on. How many of you guys know it's a good thing to pray? Yes? I go to one of those churches, you can yell at me. So I don't do the quiet one, right? So how many of you know it's a good thing to pray? Say yes.
Yeah!
There you go, alright. And so we wanna do that, but also tonight, if you guys would join me, we're gonna pray, actually, one of our board members for Wise County Conservatives, their daughter, the people who actually own this facility, their daughter is in the hospital right now, unresponsive, not doing well. She's nineteen years old. We just, we just need to pray and just ask out to touch her. Yes?
Yes!
So let's do that. Let's, if you guys would join me. Father, we thank you because you are good. And we're so, we're just so glad that you chose to be known as a good father. You could have been anything. You could have been a tyrant. You could have been anything when you chose to be father. Lord, we just ask right now, we just pray over Charity Wells. I just pray, Father, in the name of Jesus, that you would just touch her body, that you would be with her, that your presence would just permeate the place she's in right now. That you would be with her family, and I pray, Lord, that she would come to health, come back to being herself. And we ask you, God, just to do a tremendous work in her life of healing. Father, we thank you so much that you care about our every small need. And so tonight, Father, we just ask you to intervene on their behalf on for the Wells family. Lord, I also pray tonight for the state of Texas. We pray for our leaders that are down in Austin, that are, right now, that they're struggling with decisions that, quite frankly, they probably shouldn't even be struggling with. And I pray, Lord, that you would give them wisdom. I pray, Lord, that you would give them understanding. And I pray that they would have the courage to do what is right, to do what they said they're going to do. And we pray, Lord, that your kingdom come and your will be done in Texas as it is in heaven. Amen?
Amen.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we always start with a patriotic song. That's our thing here. So we're gonna say in Texas, our Texas, I think it's appropriate.
Alright, guys. Oh, wrong key. There we go. We're gonna sing this together. It is the great song of Texas. And just sing it out with me, okay? I know that everybody may know the exact melody because everybody on YouTube has a different opinion, apparently. But we're gonna sing it this way. Texas, our Texas, all hail the mighty state. Texas, our Texas, so wonderful, so great. Boldness and grandness, withstanding every test. Oh, empire wide and glorious, you stand supremely best. God bless you Texas, and keep you brave and strong. That you may grow in power and work throughout the ages long. And by the way, as we continue to sing this, if you'll pull up your program that you got when you came in, the words are actually on there too if you have a hard time seeing the screen. Here we go. Texas, oh Texas, your freedom single star. Sends out its radiance to nations near and far. In love of freedom, it sets our hearts aglow. With Austin San Jacinto and glorious Alamo. God bless you Texas, and keep you brave and strong. That you may grow in power and work throughout the ages long. Texas, dear Texas, from tyrant with no free. Shines forth in splendor, your star of destiny. Mother of heroes, we come to build them true. We're breaking our allegiance, our faith, our love for you. And God bless Texas, and keep you brave and strong. That you may grow in power and work throughout the ages long. God bless you Texas, and keep you brave and strong. That you may grow in power and work throughout the ages long. Amen?
Yeah!
Okay, we're gonna go through a few announcements. So you went through all my announcements, I believe. Alright, so first of all, Decatur, Texas is the most awesome town in the state of Texas on Texas holidays. So this year, in 2021, during Texas Independence Day and San Jacinto Day, the Decatur Square was covered in Texas flags, which is awesome. So we've actually had all these leaders from all these other towns saying, man, we wish we were living in Decatur, which you probably should have lived in Decatur. But anyways, that's Decatur, Texas on San Jacinto Day just a few days ago. Next slide. Alright, so we got a couple announcements here. We have made recommendations for the upcoming election. It is Saturday. Y'all need to vote on Saturday. Some of these races are uncontested, but we need to give them our support because there's a little bit of interesting aspects to these uncontested races because in some cases, people have backed out the race but not done it officially. So we need to vote for the people that we're recommending. So Dylan Barnes for DSC plays five, Melanie Christian plays six, Kevin Loemanic, Northwest ISB. And we're also asking to no vote on Northwest ISB bond. Real quick, the reason for that is plain and simple. Our Texas GOP platform states that we're not passing huge bonds on off-elections where people aren't voting. This is nearly a billion-dollar bond. And they're gonna pass it and get all the people in the school district to just go vote yes, and it's just gonna sail through. The same bond failed in November. They made no changes other than taking a bunch of money off that they basically don't need to spend now because a lot of people were withdrawing their kids because of COVID. So there's really been no significant changes to the same bond, and they're just passing it a few months later. So they didn't really try, in my opinion. But anyways, that's why we are recommending to go vote on that. Next slide. Okay, so our next meeting, believe it or not, is Monday. This is a special meeting. This isn't our regular meeting. So please come out to that. It should be really good. Judge Quinzenberry, a renowned conservative from Parker County, is making a rare speaking appearance in Wise County. We are very interested to see what he has to say. And Chairman Kraut, a personal friend of mine. He is a massive property tax protest guy. He has actually authored a number of bills that will reform the property tax system. Some of these have made it through in the eighty-sixth legislature. A couple, I think, I think died on the chopping block today, unfortunately, because our legislature is not very good. Alright, Citizen Advocacy Training. We are holding that on May eighth. Cran Road from Two Texas Project is kind enough to come out and teach this. We need people to come because this is how we petition our legislature to make a difference. Now, you might say it doesn't make a difference to petition our legislature, but it has. There are probably a way to pass a couple things this legislative session as token gestures. But the thing is that we need to know the process because sooner or later, we're gonna get some good folks in there that actually do what we ask, and we're gonna have to know what the process is. How do you go down? What do you, how do you dress yourself? How do you speak in behalf of a bill? These are things that most people have never done, and this is, this class will educate you. So how many people are interested in this class? Alright, please sign up. It's easy. It's free. That's part of what we're gonna, we do as Wise Conservatives is to put a little money forth to make these things possible. So please come out, May eighth. It's only four hours. Alright, so I wanna give you a couple of things, not to scare you, just to tell you stuff going on. America Families Plan. This is Joe Biden's most recent attempt to try to make our lives better. Raise the top tax bracket to forty percent. The IRS is going to get a report on every withdrawal and every deposit you make to your bank account if this passes. I mean, doesn't sound good to me. I don't want the IRS to know. I think the mattress is looking pretty good right now. Long-term capital gains will be taxed to forty-three percent. Say goodbye to your 401K. Adds a second debt tax on top of the existing debt tax. Free college for all, free preschool for all. Okay? So these are the kinds of things that are happening right now. This is why our legislature being a bunch of jerks is not being very good for us, right? They are not serving Texas. They are not standing for our needs. They are withdrawing in our hourly need. Next slide. So, one of, point out one thing that's actually kind of reached us. As Wise Conservatives, we've been actually trying to help, trying to help some of the surrounding counties start groups like ours. This group has been very successful. Cook County is starting a group. They just had a meeting last week. And there's a fellow that we met, when I met, when I ran for office last year. His name is Mark Middleton. Outstanding dude, as far as I can tell. Made the small mistake of going up to the Capitol. Was it really a mistake? I don't think so. But he went up to the Capitol, was accused of all kinds of things that I don't believe he did. And he's facing twenty years in prison. The feds came to his house last week, backed with a big federal SWAT team, beat down his door, took him and his wife off. Cook County GOP Chair says, characterized, "I'm sure by now that most of you are aware that FBI arrested Mark and his family on Monday morning. They are being charged with multiple offenses from the January sixth insurrection." I thought Democrats called it insurrection, not Republicans.
Right.
Right?
Come on.
So here's the thing. This is why groups like this exist. Is the GOP is, in many cases, Democrats with Republican name, or after their name.
That's true.
And so getting some of these rural counties, this guy is basically throwing this fellow under the bus, Cook County. And he's already characterizing his behaviors as being something, I mean, let's say he went through the Capitol. Should you face twenty years in prison?
Nope.
Should I expect the federal government to come and ruin my life? Because he's never gonna, I mean, he's gonna spend his fortune in legal fees from here on out. Okay? So I just wanna let you know that this stuff is going on, and it's not some faraway problem that's happening to people we know. Next slide. So I wanna point this out. Somebody brought this up the other day, and it just blew my ever-loving mind. We have held the legislature in Texas, both houses, for nineteen years. The governor, I say we, I say the GOP, I don't know that I want to include myself as we, but nevertheless, twenty-six years we've held the governorship. And in that amount of time, look at all these things that we're still trying to pass after all that time. Election integrity, religious freedom, school choice for all, abolition of abortion. Are any of these things gonna pass this session? Likely not. We might get constitutional care if we're lucky. But my fear is, is that we're gonna push all of our efforts into this one thing, and we're still gonna have parents mutilating their kids.
Yep.
Alright?
Yes.
So I just wanna let you know, there's thirty-two days left in the session, and our legislature is failing us.
Yes, sir.
I want you to understand what's going on. That with all the effort and all that attention, these, these people have never had the scrutiny in the last ten years that they're having right now. They're crawling out of their skin, and that's a good thing, but they're still not behaving differently. So, that kinda made me start thinking. I was talking to my friend, Bruce. And this weekend, I don't know how many people, yeah, with Wise County, a lot of people, apparently. The Wise County is hosting the Scottish Island Games. And that's something we go to every year, and because our family's Scottish, and we kind of really appreciate our ancestry. And I was talking to Bruce, and we were talking about the calling of the clans. And the whole idea there is that you, there's a ceremony, and you basically have an opportunity to say, my clan is here. And when, there's a real power to that. Because the thing is, is part of what we're doing here is standing up for our legacy of our families. The things that our family stood up for in years past, in generations past, that fought for the liberty that we need to protect, and that we're failing them. And so, you know, you sit there and think about, you know, my ancestors, many of y'all, how many people have Scottish ancestry? Probably half of you. And so, these people had their religion taken away from them. They had their language outlawed. They had their, their history was outlawed. The British government actually taught their sons and daughters that they were never a kingdom to begin with. They actually told them that their lands were gonna be taken away, that their, that farming was outlawed, and that their marriages weren't made by the Anglican Church, and they weren't valid. Alright? So then they, so ultimately, these people all ended the United States. Thirty years later, after the Battle of Clough, the last major land battle in the UK, they find themselves in North America. And it's kind of an interesting narrative in American history that you actually look at a large percentage of people who were signers of the Declaration of Independence were actually Scots that were either at Clough or had family at Clough. There's a narrative there that we are actually standing up for and passing down, this idea of self-rule and self-government. This comes all the way back from our ancestors have been fighting this for generation after generation. Sixty years after that, a lot of our ancestors, I wish it was my ancestors. I'm not native Texas, but I gotta hear sports, okay? But anyways, a lot of our ancestors stood up and said the same thing to somebody called Santa Anna, who was looking to take away their freedoms in Texas. And here we are in 2021, same thing. Let's go through the Bill of Rights. Do you have a right of religious, I mean, can your church actually stand up and talk about politics in any way, shape, or form? I don't think so. Do you have the right to say what you wanna say? Well, apparently, Mark Middleton didn't have the right to say or petition his government the way he thought he should be able to. I mean, do you have the right to bear arms? Well, in a marginal way, I mean, an affidavit against mankind. I mean, do you have the right to any sort of privacy, serve to seizure papers? No, I mean, everything that you've ever said or done has been recorded for the last twenty years. So there's really nothing that we have that's any semblance to anything that our ancestors ever agreed to. So this is a valid conversation we should be having. In my opinion, we are at a very narrow window to be able to do anything about it. So with that, I wanted to basically preface that, to say, I am very glad to invite Daniel Miller to come up here and tell us about this notion of Texas reasserting its status as an independent nation. Daniel has a long history of, you know, working this issue. Since nineteen ninety-six, he's been an ardent Texas nationalist. He, he wrote a number of books that I've read that have really affected my thinking. A Line in the Sand many years ago, if you ever read that, great outstanding book. He also wrote Texas a couple of years ago, which was kind of the book that was the pattern for the movement we see right now. It addresses many of the problems that one could imagine about what would look like for a large state like Texas to be able to stand up on its own two feet. So Daniel has been working this for many, many years. And I'm really proud to have known him a little bit, and gotten to know him. And I'm really excited to hear what he has to say. So Daniel Miller.
Howdy.
Howdy.
Eater from Decatur. Come on. So when we kicked off the tour, the first stop was in Cossey, Texas. You guys know the claim and fame for Cossey, Texas?
No.
Birthplace of one Bob Wills. And so when I, when I roll into town, that's all I can think of is Bob Wills going, "Eater from Decatur." Ah-ha! Well, let me just start off by asking a quick question. Who here is ready for Texas? Oh, wait a minute. Hold on. Let's try this again. Who here is ready for Texas?
Yeah!
Okay, thank you and good night. It's been a pleasure in Decatur. Thank you. No, look, I, it would be short if that's all I did, right? It definitely would not have been worth the drive all of you made, the drive I made, to come here and just ask that one question. So we're gonna spend us some time together tonight talking about something that we absolutely love, Texas independence, right?
Right.
Right.
You know, it's a beautiful thing, going from one end of Texas to the other, and asking that question about who's ready for Texas, and watching people stand up and shout and scream, excited, passionate about the promise of Texas independence and the fact that we are almost there. Doggone, it's a wonderful thing. Andy said, "I've been doing this a long time." He's not kidding. August twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-six, was the day that I made the decision to honor the words that William Barrett Travis ended his famous letter with. Victory or death. I committed on that day to pursue Texas independence until either it was achieved or until some grape digger was patting me in the face with a shovel. And guess what? I'm about this close from retirement now. And it's all thanks to you guys. We are closer to Texas independence than we have ever been. And you know, it's pretty doggone important for us, right here, right now. Important than it is, right here and right now. Now, before I get ripped off into this, and my understanding is, and I noticed this when the pastor came up to offer the prayer, you guys are a bit rowdy. And I'm okay with that. The rowdier, the better. So before I tear off into this, I wanna start off with this. And for the duration of our time here tonight, I want you to keep this in the back of your mind. You see, the Texas Constitution, a beautiful, beautiful, somewhat cumbersome document, because apparently we like to amend it every couple of years, right? But the cool part about the Texas Constitution is Article One, the Texas Bill of Rights. You see, our governing document didn't tack them on as some afterthoughts. Some amendments to the document, they reside and live in Article One. In fact, the first words of the Texas Constitution, are you ready for it? Texas is a free and independent state. Texas is a free and independent state. Is that not a wonderful thing?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna beat that by the time it's all over with. But see, something else that's really awesome about Article One, Section One of the Texas Constitution is the words at the tail end of it. Because while we get all fired up about Texas being a free and independent state, this post-Civil War document highlights a very important fact about our relationship with the Union. Because it's with these words, that the perpetuity of the Union depends on the right of local self-government, unimpaired to all the states. Now, I'm originally from northeast Texas. So I had to break that, so let me break it down to the northeast Texas topic, okay? The perpetuity of the Union, AKA, our continued participation in said Union, depends on the right, not the privilege of the process, but the right of local self-government.
Right.
Our ability to govern ourselves, unimpaired. Not tried on, not ignored, not blocked, not hijacked, not diverted, not denied, unimpaired. So let me ask you a question. Do you feel like our right of local self-government has been impaired?
Oh, yes.
Guess what? According to that governing document that governs Texas and the one that every one of the politicians that are down there in the legislature right now, they put their hand on the Bible, and they stuck their right hand up in the air, and they swore an oath too, says that our relationship in the Union is done. Now, I know for some people, that might be strong medicine.
Come on.
But I'm pretty doggone sure it ain't these people. And it's hard to think about because we've been participating in this Union for a very long time. We've been the most patriotic. The world has said time and time again that when they envision America, that they look at Texans. We've obeyed the Constitution. We've been faithful to the contract, haven't we?
Yes.
We've done everything we were supposed to do. We didn't fail. They failed. So now it's time for us to do something about it.
Amen.
Now, here's the good part. Are you ready?
Yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna stay in Article One for a bit, if that's alright, Andy? Is that okay? He's nodding. Thank you. Article One, Section Two. Now, before I tell you what it says, I'm gonna tell you that some form of these words have existed in every Texas Constitution, every Texas Bill of Rights, all the way back to the Republic of Texas Constitution in eighteen thirty-six. You wanna understand what motivated those people who fought the Texas Revolution? Put your ears on this. All political power is inherent in the people. And all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their benefit. And the people have, at all times, the inalienable right to alter, reform, or abolish their form of government in such manner as they may think expedient. Praise God. All political power is inherent in the people. All political power is inherent in who?
The people.
Oh, folks, that didn't sound very powerful to me. But let's give this another whirl, okay? All political power is inherent in who?
The people.
People, and who are we?
The people.
We're the people. Didn't say that all political power is inherent in the politicians or the pollsters or the pundits or the propagandists masquerading as journalists. It said that all political power is inherent in?
The people.
We are the people.
Yes.
And it is our right, our inalienable right, to alter, reform, or abolish our form of government in such manner as we think expedient. You see, I always love it when I run up against some knucklehead politician in Austin.
Too many of them.
Who tells us that this can't be done, that it shouldn't be done. And we draw their attention to Article One, Sections One and Two, but especially Article One, Section Two, and have to remind them that that decision about whether we stay or go, it's up to us.
They work for us.
Not up to them, not up to the establishment politicians. It's not a mother may I. We don't have to go ask the guy who can magically fall upstairs three times if we can go. We don't need their permission. The only people who have a say in this issue are the people of Texas, as it should be. Am I right?
Yes.
It's a wonderful, wonderful thing to be not only on the right side of the Constitution, but to be on the right side of history. You see, we not only have a constitutional mandate to do this and a path forward, we have a legacy of independence that says that we should. Let me roll you back a little bit. We're all familiar with the Battle of the Alamo overnight.
Yeah.
That's good, because if someone said no, they were gonna revoke your card and eject you from the event. That's how you know when there's a plant in the meeting to cause trouble. And as a matter of fact, we know that William Barrett Travis wrote a very famous letter from the Alamo. As a matter of fact, they pulled out the original a few years back and displayed it at the Alamo. It, it was amazing to see it in print, and it ended with those words that I uttered earlier, victory or death. We know that. But what most people don't realize is Travis didn't just write one letter. He wrote several letters and was able to get them out. And on March the third, he wrote a letter to his friend Jesse Grimes. Now, Jesse was there at Washington on the Brownus with the provisional government, the convention, trying to figure out exactly what they were going to do next because it was a hot war. Family was in the field. The Alamo was surrounded. Travis had been called in for reinforcements. And there was Jesse with William Barrett Travis's son. So Travis communicated to him on March the third, not realizing that they had declared independence the day before. Kinda hard to get news in when you're surrounded, right? And this is what he said. He said, "Let the convention go on and make a declaration of independence. And then the world will know, and my men will know, what we are fighting for. For if independence is not..." For if independence is not declared, my men are prepared to lay down their arms and surrender." Something you don't really equate with the Alamo defenders, right? But he said this. He said, "But under the flag of independence, my men will peril their lives a thousand times." It's our legacy. You want to know what the Alamo was about? It was about independence and the liberty that it guaranteed, the freedom and the rights. You want to know why Sam Houston was able to march an army of volunteers halfway across Texas and defeat the Napoleon of the West? It's independence and the liberty that it guarantees. So at that moment in history, the people of Texas that were there had a choice. They could submit to the Taric Santa Anna or flee, because remember, there was a perfectly good United States sitting right over there that they had left to come to Texas, they could have done that. But instead, they chose to plant their feet and say, "This far and no further." This is where freedom lives or dies. They said it's our duty. And so they did the honorable thing. They stood, they fought. Many died. But in the end, a new nation among nations was born, the Republic of Texas. And it was not easy. It was very difficult in those days, but they did it. Knowing that on the other side of independence was gonna be even harder work. But they did it anyway, because they knew that there were things that mattered more than their safety, their comfort, their convenience. They knew that there were things like liberty, and freedom, and duty, and honor, and independence. So it's wonderful. Our Constitution, our Texas Constitution says, "We can do what we're talking about doing right here." But our history tells us that too, because otherwise, those people that fought and sacrificed and died in the Texas Revolution, you did it for nothing. And I'm not gonna desecrate their memory or their sacrifice, nor am I gonna let some establishment politician, pollster, or pundit, or some third-rate adjunct professor from Buck Tussle Community College tell me that I can't. It ain't gonna happen. Being on the right side of history, it's also good to be looking forward, to keep our eyes fixed on the future. Because these kids and future generations are depending on what we do in Texas, right here, right now. What we're talking about here is greater than some, this current legislative session. It's greater than the next election cycle. It's greater than the next presidential election. It's greater than all of it. We're talking about decisions that we are making right here, right now, not just collectively, but personally, affecting generations. And you think I'm kidding? I'm sure no one here thinks I'm kidding, right? But come on, let's think about it. Amendments are not absolute, saith the vegetative state guy. President Potato Head. I got a ton of them, folks, I could keep going on mine. Amendments are not absolute. Can you imagine, in this day and age, in this place that we call Texas as contained, we still effectively part the Union, can you imagine a head of state, the President of the United States, bold-faced, standing up, looking square to a camera, and saying, "Amendments are not absolute"? I mean, that sounds like some thing, some kind of ideology you would have heard from Benito Mosley and Adolf Hitler, right? Things like that are preludes to really horrific acts in history. Spoiler alert for those of you that are not history students, it does not end well for people like us when leaders say those sorts of things, especially when they just recently stood up and said that us in particular, here in Texas, are Neanderthals. He literally dehumanized us, and then said amendments are absolute, so they could strip the protections that, minimal as they are, those protections that we have. It's a prelude to something really dark. But we got a future. You see, here's a beautiful thing that I know, and why Texas is the right thing at the right time for the right people. If you look around the world in the last seventy-five to eighty years, there has been an explosion of people just like us reclaiming their right of self-government. Now, I know we kinda think a little bit here in Texas that we kinda got everything going on, but let me tell you something. We're not the only freedom-loving people in the world. At the end of World War II, there were roughly fifty-four recognized countries around the world, and by the end of the twentieth century, there were one hundred and ninety-two. Those countries did not fall from space. The Earth did not get any bigger. What happened was, the people like us sat in rooms like this, had conversations like we're having right now, and said, "You know what? We think the best people to govern us just happens to be us." And reclaimed their right of self-government. And that's a wonderful thing. We've seen modern expressions of attempts and successes of that. We watched the dissolution of the Soviet Union, when they told us the Cold War was over, when they were secretly implanting the values that drove the Soviet Union in Washington DC to become public policy in the 2020s. Amazing. Then we saw Scotland, 2014, go to the polls and vote on independence. And no, they didn't vote for it, and why that happened is a conversation that we can have on another day, but you know what? They got a chance as a people to vote on the issue. They said no, not probable. They'll get another bite at the apple, I'm sure. Because that's what's happened. In the last hundred years, there have been about between fifty and fifty-two referendums on independence around the world. And up those, Quebec and Scotland are the two prominent failures. Before that, there were some that failed on the first attempt, and within ten years, they were back at the polls voting themselves independent. So good news, folks, the odds are in our favor. But it's even better than that. Because you see, here's where we're at. As Texans, we're ready. You realize that there's, we've been literally crystal, there's not been a room that I've been in where I asked a question, "Who here is ready for Texas?", and I didn't get that round of us. Just like the Union. Now, I want you to roll this back in your mind, five years. If you would have guessed that you would be sitting in a room today filled with people who are ready for Texas independence, would you ever have guessed it? Where they were willing to express it so verbally, so passionately? Well, here you are. And just so you understand, according to some of the establishment politicians, you don't exist. Just, they said, not me, I mean, they said it. You got a guy from up here in your neck of the woods, you guys know State Representative Jeff Leach? Uh, yeah, I'm here some grumps. I'm not gonna say anything good about him, so just everybody be okay, it's okay. But when, and we know, Andy showed the slide with House Bill thirteen fifty-nine up there, we'll talk about that here in a minute, but when Kyle beat him and went to go file that legislation, Jeff Leach took Twitter and had a little Twitter tantrum. You know, a hundred and forty-character crybabics all day long. But here was his argument against Kyle's legislation. "It's a waste of time, because no one supports it. So therefore, because no one supports it, then we shouldn't be allowed to vote on it." It's like, wait a minute, stop the presses, people. Let's walk through the Leach logic. No one supports it, that's his first point, right? So let me just make sure, who here is ready for Texas? People that support it. But we shouldn't put it to a vote, even though no one supports it. So our comeback was, hey, let's put it to a vote. Why don't you shut Daniel Miller up once and for all? If no one supports it, you will put it on the ballot, and it will get one vote, and that'll be Daniel Miller, right? But they don't want to do that. Now, let me tell you, his viewpoint is not unique. I mean, literally, you wanna, you wanna see him exercise and just, you know, like a cat trying to cover its mess on a concrete floor? Talk to these guys about Texas independence. Then you will definitely know that crawfish season is in. That took a minute, thank you. That logic, now, we get the same kind of these people, but I want to explain to you why it is that the political establishment guys do not want this to come to a vote. Would you like to know that? I'm gonna let you, it's not mine. It's even, it's even better than that, you're gonna love this. The political establishment guys do not want this put on the ballot, because they know if it goes on the ballot, we win. And we don't win by the level. We win by an awful lot. Because there are a lot of people that believe like this, that aren't congregating workers. We've seen it in the poll numbers. Well, that's a whole topic for another time. But we go to the polls on this issue, and we win. And I could razzle the asking you with poll numbers till cows come home. Our internal polling shows we're gonna smoke these guys by at least ten to fifteen percentage points. I mean, it's substantial, and look, that number's gonna climb every single solitary day with that neo-Marxist buffoonery that's coming out of Washington DC. I mean, doggone it, Texas, we can't lose. But here's how I know, beyond the poll numbers and anything else. I'm gonna share a little secret with y'all. After twenty-five years, you do get a bit weirdy of having to answer all the minutia about Texas independence. And especially the objections thrown up by the opposition, the Moses Roses of the world. Those people that would have tuck-tailed and ran at the first sign of trouble. And man, I'm gonna tell you, there are people out there that are looking for every excuse not to do what they know needs to be done. And so you do get a little way on that, I mean, it wears you down a bit. You know, after about the sixty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-first time you've been asked a social security question, it starts to grate on you a bit. So several years back, I got fed up. That's kind of a funny term to use when we're talking about this, huh? Probably my Rip Perry title is booked that. But I got fed up with it, and so I turned the tables. So we're gonna do a little thought experiment, you guys with me? You wanna get this with me? Alright, so here's what I want you to do. For a moment, we're gonna go back, and we're gonna imagine that right now, Texas was currently a free, independent, self-governing nation in every single respect of the word. Are you with me? So right now, that's where we are. Free, independent, sovereign, self-governing, a nation among nations. We have our own, we have say over our immigration policy and our border policy. We have our own army, we have our own embassies, we have our own passports, we have our own money. We are a, I mean, we have our own doggone Olympic team, okay? I mean, we're a nation. Self-governing, we don't answer anybody but us. And instead of this being about Texans, this was about whether or not we wanted to join the Union. So let me ask you this question. Knowing what we know about the federal system and the Union right now, and knowing that Texas is a free, independent, sovereign, self-governing nation-state, control all that, would you vote to join the Union?
No!
That was even louder than, "Who's ready for Texas?" But would you, I mean, would you vote to join the Union? Well, if you wouldn't vote to join, why in the world would you ever vote to stay? Well, guess what? When we flip the script on those people, we win one hundred percent of the time on these debates, because... But, but hang on, I don't, Andy, I don't feel like I'm doing everybody a service. I think we maybe answered the question too quick. So in, in, in the sense of being fair and balanced, I like some news media outlets. I don't want you to make your decision so quickly. I'm gonna sell it to you. Now, it's okay, I might be pushing. But I just don't want you to make a knee-jerk reaction, right? We like our votes to be well thought out, don't we? We don't like, we don't like, you know, under-informed voters. So let me tell you what you get by joining the Union. Day one, Texas, you get to live under a hundred and eighty thousand pages of federal laws, rules, and regulations. Then if you printed it out and stacked it up, it would be taller than the San Jacinto Monument. So good news, just by joining the Union, not only do you get all that control over your lives, but you get a second monument. I mean, it's a deal, right? I mean, what deal? But even better than that, look, I understand that it can be kind of difficult to navigate through a hundred and eighty thousand pages of federal laws, rules, and regulations, so immediately, you're gonna get these helpful, friendly, two-and-a-half-million-un-elected bureaucrats. They're gonna help you understand it, whether you want to understand it or not. I mean, who doesn't need two-and-a-half-million-un-elected bureaucrats working for you? It's a deal. I mean, come on. Who doesn't want that? I mean, having a posse of two-and-a-half-million people's pretty awesome, you know, they're gonna have your best interests in mind, even when you don't have your own best interests in mind, as determined by them, right? And of course, you know that lovely Internal Revenue Service, I mean, they'll do your bookwork for you. Okay, well, if that doesn't convince you, uh, let's talk about this. How about thirty trillion dollars' worth of debt? I mean, you know, granted, your share's not all of that. And granted, you won't have to pay back all of that as part of your share. Good news is, there'll be plenty of time to kick that can down the road to their children, and their children, and their children, and their children, and their children. I'll stop, but you get the point, right? So, you know, that's gonna be cool, get to spread it out a bit. But think about all the wonderful things you're going to get by being part of the Union. I mean, all that federal money's gonna pour right back into here, right? But, you see, there's a little asterisk on that, so let me explain that. You're gonna pay your money to those two-and-a-half-million-un-elected bureaucrats in the form of taxes. Then they're gonna take some of that money, and they're gonna use it because, you know, administrative overhead. Gotta service that debt maybe a little. But you see, before it comes back, they gotta take some of it, and they gotta send it over to California. Because, you know, California's having problems paying for their Pakistani gender studies program. That's not a real program, not in California, by the way. But, you know, we gotta help them pay for this, this social experimentation, or their failed pension programs, or whatever other bailouts, so Texans, you need to do your share, don't you feel better about that? Now, I'm gonna tell you, all that sort of require is Texas as a whole to overpay somewhere between a hundred and three to a hundred and sixty billion dollars every single solitary year. And yeah, I understand that that's an awful lot, like, you know, the financial impact of Hurricane Harvey hitting Texas every nine months. But you guys are Texans, you got broad shoulders, you love helping a neighboring need, like those two-and-a-half-million-un-elected bureaucrats that are doing their dead-level best to help you. Like those two and a half million elected, unelected bureaucrats that are doing their dead-level best to help you. Or New York and California and those other guys with their little special programs, right? You don't mind that. But I'll tell you this. Good news is, when that federal money comes back into Texas, you don't even have to worry about how it gets spent because we'll tell you how to spend it. But, another asterisk, we're not gonna send you enough to pay for the programs that we make you implement. Right? Now you're gonna have to pay more into the state government to match it. But it's only fair that we kind of go hatches, right? So look, I could go on and on to sell the benefits, but I think we're at a point of decision where we're pretty well educated on this situation, right? So here's the question. Today, knowing what you know, would you vote to join the Union?
No.
Well, I'd settle that. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing. That's why they don't want us to have a vote. Because having a vote, which Kyle Beederman's House Bill 1359 would have given us a mechanism in this session to vote on it in November, that's what his bill does, kicks off the process for us to begin the study part of the transition. It's why they fought so hard against it. You know, let's not talk about the fact that they treat our legislative chambers like a frat house that's been rocked and groaned with so much scandal that it looks like a dad-dumb episode of The Kardashians. It's embarrassing. But what's even more embarrassing is when last night, the President of the United States is getting up and talking about, you know, how he's gonna start working on this right to keep them bare arms if we really don't do any work because our limits aren't absolute. We're getting hearings on bills to declare Ukrainian genocide remembrance day. That got a hearing in committee. Or this wonderful resolution that the House passed or are working on to declare Representative Andy Mur's mustache as the official mustache of the Texas House of Representatives. Not even joking. While we've got a massive crisis on our border, these guys are up there playing mock legislation. And they're mocking us. They have lied to us. They have kicked the can down the road. And now it's time for us to do something about it. So I'm gonna talk about House Bill 1359. And I want you to understand how important that piece of legislation is and how important it was on the day that it was filed. When our organization was founded, you couldn't find a group of independent supporters in one spot hardly with a hunting dog and Ouija boards. They just wouldn't get it. People didn't want to talk about it because we had been made to feel that it was an extreme position, that we were marginal. That if the people that supported independence believed a certain way, looked a certain way, acted a certain way. But even in 2005, when a third-party polling company polled this issue, support polled in single digits because people were afraid to speak up. Good news is, this issue has always, since the inception of our organization, polled higher than the approval rating of the United States Congress. Which typically hovers somewhere in the above or below lacrosse. But here's what we found. To heck with poll numbers. We went and started working on the ground, knocking doors, talking to voters, having events, being unapologetic, unashamed, unafraid supporters of Texas independence because we knew we were right. What we found was more Texans who said, absolutely, I've been looking for this my whole life. Just like the people in this room tonight. I've been looking for this my entire life. So fast forward to 2014, remember the aforementioned Scottish independence referendum? Reuters episodes came sniffing around like the rest of those media guys because Scotland was having an independence vote, suddenly they remembered that, oh, I think Texas is working on that, right? So let's go poll different states. Let's poll the whole United States and let's see what those numbers turn out to be. And it's interesting when you looked in the breakdowns in 2014, 54% of Republicans, half of independents, and 35% of Democrats said that they believe that Texas should leave the Union and become a self-governing independent nation. That's 2014. Now, it's funny how they reported it. You're gonna love this. They reported it as 35% of the people in the southwest region want to see their state independent. Which is quite an interesting fact when you figure that they threw in New Mexico, Arizona, and California. They had to skew the numbers to report it to the public, right? Because the bombshell was, half of the people in the Republican Party in Texas were ready to bounce out. Half of independent voters and a third of Democrats in Obama's second term were ready to say, peace out. We're done. We don't want any more of this garbage. And so it has been an exercise to get the people of Texas a vote on this. And boy, howdy, it's been hard. Lots of politicians pouring lots of honey in lots of ears. Well, you know, if we can just get somebody to file the legislation, we'll be all over it. This legislative session came around and we found a man with courage. State Representative Kyle Beederman said, if this is what the people want, I will file the bill and I will put the decision in the hands of the people. And boy, howdy, do I thank God every day for Kyle Beederman. And exhibiting that level of courage. And so there we are. Kyle files the bill. He's got people signing onto it. State Representative James White comes on to join off of you guys who got some folks up here that signed onto it. Steve Choak down in the Woodlands, Brian Sut... We got guys that sat onto it. And boy, howdy. It was like someone turned on the light in the kitchen of the most cockroach-infested house in the worst part of town you can imagine. Those guys were scrambling for cover. Guys that are all ostensibly about, well, you know, we gotta make, we gotta keep Texas Texas. Well, buddy, let me tell you something. The only thing you're gonna keep Texas Texas is to keep Texas out of here. That's how that works. Guys, remember your oath. Oh, yeah, that's just pillow talk, baby. That's what they think. Their oath to the Constitution, to Article 1, Section 1, Article 1, Section 2. Ah, you know, painting and then there's government. That's what they say. I'm pretty sure you guys are tired of that, right?
Yeah.
So here we are. All the legislators in both the House and the Senate had every opportunity to sign on to this legislation. The good guys did. And the bad guys didn't. And that's the way as Texans we have to look at it. They had a chance to stand up. Not some platitude, not some tersely worded resolution that is nothing more than someone shaking a fist at a cloud in the sky, but a real deal, legitimate piece of legislation that would have put the decision about Texas's future in your hands. And instead, what they did was they sided with the Joe Bidens of the world who believe that we're Neanderthals and we're too stupid to make our own decisions. And you know what? That may be tough medicine for some people to hear. Well, you know, there's, there's other issues that... No, there's not. Not when our freedom and our liberty are at stake. Either you believe in your oath and believe in the people of Texas or you're just another elitist who believes that you can make decisions for us, about us, with us. So our window is super narrow. The bill sits in the State Affairs Committee right now without a hearing. While the legislature debates the merits of Andy Mur's mustache, our rights are under threat every single solitary minute. Andy just literally showed you a slide telling you what's coming down the pipe from one piece of legislation. Just one. You think that's the only one? No. They're gunning for us. And on the other side of this fight, one of two things will happen. Texas will be free and independent or Texas will not be here for future generations in the way that we know Texas. And I know it's tough for some people to think about a post-United States Texas, but it's not for me. Because sometimes you come to a fork in the road and you gotta make a decision. And yeah, it could be tough, but it ain't that tough. Because when you pull out a globe and you spin it around and you put your finger on any landmass on that globe, understand that those people enjoy the right of self-determination and operate as a free, independent nation among nations in every respect of the word. You know that picture you closed your eyes and imagined a moment ago? That can be us. And if those people can make it, why not us? Why not us? Why not have a Texas that is the safe harbor for the principles that the founders gave their lives and their honors and their sacred fortunes to establish a home for? Why not make that Texas? Governor Adams is very fond of saying, we should lead and not leave. But the only way for us to lead is to lead and to protect those things that are under constant assault. And no number of lawsuits, no number of resolutions, no matter how tersely worded they are, is gonna do the trick. The only thing that's gonna get, the only thing that's gonna get the job done is to let the people of Texas have their say and declare with one loud voice, we want our independence. Tex-It or bust? But it's gonna require some things. This is not quick. You're not gonna get your independence tomorrow. And much like Benjamin Franklin said, you cannot be expected to be transported from tyranny to liberty on a feather bed. It's gonna cost your time. It's gonna cost you resources. It's gonna cost your emotional capital because they're gonna come at us with everything they got. They're gonna call us every name in the book. You know how I know? We saw it with Brexit. This is gonna be what the opposition did, the Remainers did in Brexit. This is gonna make it look like a cakewalk because they already think that we're a bunch of racists, religious zealots. Right? That's what they say. We're old white guys that just cling to our guns and our models. We have Neanderthal thinking even though we could at least string together sentences unlike their leader. But they're gonna do it. I, I, that just slipped out. You guys forgive me, right? That was a nonverbal insult. Okay, don't, don't do that. That's like saying sick to a bulldog. I'm just warning you now. I grew up in a Baptist church, sir. I know how this goes. The more you amen the preacher, the more he sweats and his coat will come off. Okay? The tie. Only for Fifth Sunday service, sir. That's the singing service. But here's, here's where it stands for us. For us to be able to collectively as Texans make this decision, we all have to individually make our decisions. You know, my favorite story about the Alamo, the thing that's always captivated me about that was not the beginning of the siege or the end of the siege, but it was always the 12th day of the 13th siege. The 13, the 13-day siege. The 12th day. Because it's, as the story goes, that was the day that Travis brought everyone into the courtyard realizing that there were gonna be no reinforcements. Realizing there was virtually no chance of victory. He brought everyone out and he said, here's the situation. And he said, here's, but here's the thing. I know it looks dire. I'm giving you an opportunity. You can leave if you'd like. In the night, slip over the wall, I mean, they've been slipping curers out. You can leave. But I'm gonna stay. And I'm gonna do my duty. And so as the story goes, he took out his sword. He drew a line right in the sand. And he said, every man who will do his duty, cross the line and stand with me. And everyone crossed. Knowing what their fate was gonna be. The line in the sand is the illustration of a decision point, not just for the entire constituency, but for every single individual that was there. This is our line in the sand moment. Collectively and individually. What are we going to decide to do? Are we gonna stand on the side that's gonna subjugate our children, subjugate us, erase our rights? Treat our rights as though they're up for negotiation? That wants to erase very values that those Alamo heroes fought for? Are we gonna stand up for Texas? Stand up for liberty? Stand up for freedom? You see Sam Houston? After the annexation, he said these words. He said, the Texas will again lift its head and stand among the nation. I believe that that time is right now. And I think the question is, will you stand with her? I wanna thank you for your indulgence tonight, folks. I appreciate it. I know we're gonna do some Q and A here in a bit. Uh, but until then, I wanna turn it back over to Andy. Uh, if you wanna moderate the Q and A, you feel free. Yeah, however you wanna do it. But, but with that, before we get into the Q and A, I will tell you this. We still have our shot. We can make this happen. If we know the people of Texas are for this and we know our legislators are not for it, then we need legislators that will be for it. Because all roads to the referendum, the Tex-It referendum, lead through that legislature. So when you leave here tonight, hopefully with all of your questions answered or as many as I can get to tonight, make your decision. Do you want Texas? And if you do, make your decision to give it all you got. Because it's not gonna be just up to me. If it was up to me, we would be free, independent, self-governing already. But it's gonna be up to us. It's Texas to embrace that legacy of freedom. So that said, if you have, if, as we get to the questions and answers tonight, if you have any questions that are unanswered, I'm gonna encourage you to go to our website at texitnow.org. That's the place that takes you to all the questions and all the answers for Texas, the most popular ones we get, including that doggone social security question and so many others. I put it all in that book over there, Tex-It. I mean, it's an appropriate name, right? Uh, and it's in the book. But more than that, if you have all your questions answered, then we need you. We need you to go right over here to this table, visit with our fine folks here and, and figure out how you can get in and help. Register your support, become a member, make a contribution, become a volunteer. Many of you have already done it. But it's going to take all of us to get this done because I'm gonna tell you, we got legislators that have to be replaced to get this done. Because when they care more about Andy Mur's mustache than they care about our freedom, they can't stay. So with it being said, I wanna thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, it is such a pleasure to be in a room full of folks like you. And let me just check to make sure that I didn't turn anybody off, Andy. Who here is ready for Texas? Say again? Yeah, yeah, listen to Q and A. You guys, you gotta get questions, right?
So if you have a question, keep it within like 20 or 30 sentences or less, alright? Get to the question at some point and just speak up.
If it goes to 20 or 30 sentences, we got problems. Oh, trust and believe, me too. Hey, thank you. Hey, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, sir. Okay, who's got a question? Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Just, can I have two questions?
Sorry, sir, I'm limited to one per customer. Unless you have the coupon. Did you get the coupon? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I was born in Florida. By the way, honey, since, uh, I was born in Florida, can I be a Tex?
Welcome home. Let me, let me, I'm gonna answer your question real quick, because we get that more often than you would think. And here, here's what we tell people, because we actually have people contact us and ask if they can join the organization even though they weren't born here. And, and what we tell them is this, quite simply. If Travis, Bowie, Crockett can lay down their lives for Texas independence and not be from Texas, then who are we to set the bar any higher? Our litmus test. Do you believe in the freedom and independence of Texas? That you're a brother?
I'm only laying my heart down for Texas.
You're, you're a brother. I believe you.
And my last question, uh, will all of our tax dollars stay here in Texas?
Well, they sure won't go to DC anymore, will they? Yeah, you'd be surprised at, at how often I have to go through the math, even after talking about the overpayment, right? You know, the fact that we overpay means that we're putting more into the system than we get back out of it. So, if all that money stays here, what does that mean? Well, first off, go ahead and jam your hands down in your pocket and understand that that will be the receptacle for a whole lot of that money. Because you know what Texas doesn't have? A personal income tax. Well, 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 so the question becomes from the opposition, "Well, how are you gonna fund government?" We have a consumption tax. And when we got $103 to $160 billion infusion of capital backing our economy, yeah, sure, we're the ninth largest in the world, but now we're going for five or six. And especially with the businesses they're gonna relocate here because of the friendly climate of business. But, but I'm gonna share this one with you, too. You see, that surplus is not just a plus minus surplus, right? That money goes back into the economy, generates revenue, because one thing is, Texans like to spend that discretionary income. Not faulting you for it, let's keep that economy going. But here's what's cool about that. If we're getting that type of revenue and the ability to determine what policies we implement and how they are implemented, and our government is forced to balance the budget as we are constitutionally required to do, that means that we have even more than that surplus, which also means that we could start reducing the tax burden in other areas, like eliminating the property tax. Yeah. Mary, so you also got your appraisals this week? Okay, who's, yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just found out a couple weeks ago, we went down to, to, um, talk to the elected members about signing off the bill or supporting the bill.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, not one, not even one. And they don't click on the ballot. They're not gonna put it on the ballot. They flat out, they, they, um, they're not there to serve the people, they're serving themselves. So, my question is, how, what other way besides ballot can we get some kind of vote on Texas independence? Can we not petition? Because doesn't it, I'm gonna say we have to write a petition, your government, for a request of grievances?
Right, but that's, that's actually a different, that, that's not like a physical petition, right? So, the question is, how, how else can we get this done, right? What other mechanisms? Okay, so, so number one, currently in Texas statute, there is no mechanism for the, the people of Texas to sign onto a petition and put anything on the ballot, right? Other states have that. Just Texas is one of a handful that doesn't have initiative in a referendum. We just don't have it, okay? So, you know, obviously, our goal is to get this on the ballot for, in a binding way for the people of Texas to, to start that process, right? So, the, if we're looking for some kind of flea-flicker play that we can run, it doesn't exist. We have to go all roads to that referendum lead, right through the legislature, for the ultimate one that we want, right? So, if all roads to the vote on Texas independence lead through the legislature, and a legislator is in our way, then we have to do what's necessary for them to not be in the way, which is either flip them or replace them. And, and ultimately, where we're at is there. And, and I'm gonna tell you, this is, the, the thing is, the battle for this legislative session started after the primaries last time, even before that, after the legislative session two years ago, if you wanna get real technical about it. Had we fought that battle, which we did, we tried, the people of Texas were not ready yet, but we're a bit, we're all, as Texans, a bit late to this legislative thing, and I didn't actually talk about this in the book, is that one of the things that has been a tremendous impediment to Tex-It happening has been the fact that we've all been locked in the legislative cycle. That's how we think. We're not thinking two years, four years out, we're thinking, "Well, what are we gonna do in this next 140 days?" And I'm gonna tell you, until we replace those guys, our legislative sessions are gonna happen 140 days every other year, and it's gonna be nothing but frat party, because that's what we got, okay? So, understand that we got some opportunities moving forward, okay? So, we can, we can work the electoral process, work to replace these guys, and that's exactly what we're doing, recruiting candidates right now to primary these guys, to mobilize our volunteers. Because at the beginning of the session, we promised them all, we will have a referendum on Tex-It in 2021, or we will be having a referendum on you in 2022. We're gonna make good on our promise, okay? Now, some things can happen. You can force the governor to call a special session on this issue, and typically, if the governor calls a special session on the issue, he can snap them in, so he's gonna have to be the next pressure point, because apparently Chris Patti, the chairman of the State Affairs Committee, is just absolutely doubling down on stymying our ability to even have this bill have a hearing, right? But that's the next pressure point. But I'm telling you, don't count on it. Don't count on the governor doing it. We have to hold these legislators accountable, and how we hold them accountable is exactly, by doing exactly what we promised at the beginning of the session. You either give the people this vote that they want, or you can't be there. If they don't represent us, then they cannot represent us. So, that's, that's what has to happen. I wish there was some quicker way, some easier way. Trust me, after 25 years of doing this, I would love for there to be a quick and easy way. There ain't one. The way that you get it done is you go out and you make it happen, and you do the things necessary to make it happen, and in this regard, it's replacing these guys. So, anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Miller, um, this sounds a little bit sudden, but I think honestly, um, because you've led us, you know, so close, I think you should be the president of the Republic of Texas, or you're independent.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that, but I can, I can honestly say this. Tex-It Day plus one, Daniel Miller's going fishing. I haven't been fishing since August the 24th, 1996. And as much as, of, of an honor as that would be, uh, I, I, I have no aspirations for, for high office or anything post getting this vote and winning this vote, other than continuing to play a role as a dutiful citizen and maintain watchdog status over our newly won independence. But I appreciate the sentiment. Thank you.
And Mr. Miller, can I ask just one last question?
Sorry, I'd like to leave me one more question. Go ahead.
This, will you, uh, this, I'm, I'm sorry, Mom, I'm embarrassing you. Um, will you accept this coffee? It's from California, but this is some strong stuff.
Strong coffee. Hey, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so much. I don't care that it's from California, it's gonna migrate into my stomach for the right reasons.
Yeah, every time.
He's a long time.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, every time I see you doing a livestream, you always have a cup of coffee in my hand. I mean, this guy needs some good coffee.
You, you know me, that's fantastic. Well, I appreciate you picking up on the fact that I consume way more coffee than I should. Thank you so much.
Hey, you're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, sir?
If successful, do you envision the new constitution of Texas to be similar to the original?
I got, I got good news for you. Are you ready for this? We don't even need a brand-new constitution. Here's one. What we need to do with our constitution, our current state constitution, first off, it's got a three-branch government, it's a constitutional republic, right? So, what needs to happen post-Tex-It vote can all be accomplished by a series of amendments to our state constitution. Small things, technical corrections, like changing the name from State of Texas to Republic.
Republic.
Or perhaps changing the names of the offices from governor to president or legislature to, minor technical corrections. Some agencies will have to be expanded, some constitutionally mandated offices, like if we want our secretary of state to handle foreign affairs like it does in some other countries, we would have to grant it those powers by amendment to the constitution. So, we would have to expand some of those things. But beyond that, we don't have to do much. We just have to amend it. And there's a precedent for this, and in the 60s, there was what was called the Deadwood Amendment, where they went through and did a whole cleanup of the state constitution for some things, and did like Spanish land grant issues that had carried over, things of that nature, that no longer apply. And they literally did it in a series of amendments, all comprised of one called the Deadwood Amendments, and they put it to a vote of the people of Texas, and those things were done. So, with one piece of legislation that would be a constitutional amendment, those changes would go to a vote of the people of Texas, and the people of Texas would do it, and then suddenly, we have our constitution that looks an awful lot like the one we already went with. And we don't need to go to this whole thing of a constitutional convention where it could potentially be hijacked, right? Big concern for a lot of people, if we have to write a constitutional scratch, you could get hijacked. We don't have to worry about that. So, that's the good part about it. We're, we're already structurally set up like a self-government independent nation. All we have to do is sort of fill in the gaps and change some names, and boom, it's done. So, good news. Yes, sir?
Before I got involved in the Republican Party, I was involved in, uh, with, uh, Cleveland, Texas, uh, Michael Venus. Uh, and there were a lot of small, I understand there's other little factions that are wanting to reach the same goal. What we see is, is uniting these to make the whole stronger and stronger apart.
tnm.me/join. I mean, here, here's the bottom line, and there's no other way to say this. As an organization, we're the 800-pound gorilla in the room on the issue of independence. I mean, when, when, when our ticker on the front page is getting ready to roll over to about a half million already, I, I think it's time for people to put aside their differences and say, "Okay, so, the, the TNM is doing something right." We have, and, and I'll tell you, this is gonna get into talking about the organization a little bit about how we started, because a lot of people don't know this. But prior to the founding of the organization in 2005, we put about three years of study into figuring out what it is that needed to be done to get success. There were examples all around the world of how, how to get it done. There were some that were playing out in, in modern-day life at that point. UKIP was in an ascendancy, sort of getting ready for that breakthrough moment. The Scottish National Party had already gained power. The Catalans had already, uh, formed their coalitions in Catalonia and begun that process of trying to reassert their independence. So, there were examples, modern-day, real-world examples of how to get the job done. And so, we literally patterned ourselves on that. We knew that any, any organization that had, that advocated for independence had to be well-organized, had to be disciplined, had to be effective at political advocacy, and had to have a holistic mission. That's why if you look at our mission statement, it says, "We work to secure and protect the political, cultural, and economic independence of Texas." Working across all three spheres. They could not be an organization or movement that was solely fixated on an independence vote, but had to work on our independence as a whole. That's why we've been able to be successful, that's why we've been able to grow, that's why we've actually been able to get legislation passed previously, and been able to have an effective voice of capital among all this. And I'll tell you, having the, having Kyle file this bill, we've thrown just about every bit of political capital we've had at it. And we've established who is on the good guy's side and who's on the bad guy's side. So, if you wanna talk about, you know, sort of side groups, small groups or whatever, it's easy. Come home. Yes, sir?
Is there a list of the good guys and the bad guys?
We maintain a list on our website, if you go to tnm.me-legislature. We have a directory of both houses, both House and Senate, and everyone's position. If they've expressed no support, it's there. If they, uh, if they've expressed direct opposition, it's marked. We've marked the author, the joint author, and all the co, uh, all the co-authors. And, uh, and we've, you know, indicated the level of support for that, uh, on the Senate side as well, which has been pretty business on the Senate side.
So, is there, is there a plan of organization as far as a government that has been, is there, is there a list of people that are ready to step up and do something?
Where's the bad guys go?
Where?
Well...
Yeah, I mean, to, to your point, I think you're talking, you're in post-Tex-It, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, look, here's, here's how it works, just so we all are super clear, and I'm, I talk about this in the book, I mean, it may not be nearly as clear kind of on the FAQs of the website.
I'm not a pro.
You're good.
Break it down.
Well, I already told you, I'm a Northeast Texas guy, I gotta break things down anyway, or I can't even explain it. But, but here's, here's, here's how it breaks down. You know, we talk about independence, and, and it's fun and sort of happy, exciting for us to kind of wrap it up in this one thing, right? Tex-It. And to think about it, it's like, okay, one day, we're in the United States, and then we have a Tex-It vote, and the next day, we're out. And that's not how it works. Tex-It is not an act, it's a process. And we talk about independence is not an act, but it's a state of being, right? That's where we want to be. And there's some things that have to happen between where we are and where we wanna be, right? On that other side of the Tex-It vote. And so, it's a process. So, the thing to understand is, nothing changes after the Tex-It vote until it changes. The first thing that kicks it off, though, is an expression of the political will of the people of Texas. The people of Texas have to, have to sound off on this issue in a lawful, legal vote. And there's a very important reason for that. If we wanna drill down into that, we can, but it's important for it to end in the referendum, simply because of Article 1, Section 2. If it doesn't get put to the people of Texas, then there will always be a question mark. And more than that, it will give every pretext necessary for the opposition to undermine and undercut every step of the way. So, we have to speak with one voice, in a public, open, free-fair election of vote on the issue, and then we start the process. And that process, during the, the time that process is going on, your garbage is still gonna get picked up, you know, police still gonna be here looking out for me. Where'd they go? I guess they gave up on giving the money for that unpaid ticket, right? Um, but, more importantly, the elections, according to law, still happen. And one warning that we've got, and why we need to address the reluctance of the legislature right now, one warning from the Brexit issue, one of the reasons we've got a former UKIP regional organizer on our advisory board, is that we have to make absolutely sure that the people in Texas government, and the governor, lieutenant governor, and the rest of the legislature, at least, are pro-Tex-It people. Because they may give us the vote to placate us, right? When they realize that it's a voting issue for us, and we will never cast another vote for these guys again, we'll support every challenge that comes along, we will actively run people against them, they may give us that vote. Just to pat us on the head, give us our day, and we win, and then they may drag it out. Year goes by, two years, five years, 10 years, we can't have that. We can't have Theresa May, kind of like in, in, you know, Prime Minister over in the UK, the drug feet, and all these Ramoners that sat there in the parliament and drug Brexit out. We've gotta have elected officials in Texas that are pro-Tex-It, and that starts now. The good news is, we gotta get them in there to get the vote, but we gotta keep them there and expand their league. Expand, create more of them in the legislature. We've got heroes up there now, we just need to send in the reinforcements. Yes, ma'am?
The legislature's linked there. How...
The legislature's one thing. How in the world would you break the arm of corporations? Because right now, corporations run, oh, they run, they run the Gray Abbott, they run Texas, they run the country, they run the...
That Gray Abbott's kind of a corporation of his own, his campaign is. I mean, and, and I say that, and I'll get to the question, but, you know, Gray Abbott's got, what was the last cap, $38 million in his war chest? Do you know Gray Abbott, like Texas for Gray Abbott has their own retirement accounts for their staff workers? Go, go print out his 7,000-page campaign financial report. It's in lightning. So, do some concentration on the expenditures. That, that's, that's my, my cheat sheet, but to your point, there is an unholy alliance, right? Now, I'm not gonna be the guy who'd get up here, I'm not gonna be the Bernie Sanders to say corporate, all corporations are evil. But we have seen this unhealthy synergy between the corporations and these establishment politicians. And the fact of the matter is, the only way that we're gonna be able to break that is through this process. The things that we have to do to get the vote, help us win the vote, but those things also help us have good government on the other side of winning the vote. So, the, the bottom line is, this is the one, and we've said it time and time again, this is the one issue that can break the back of the political establishment. We saw it happen in the UK, we've seen it happen in other instances around the world, and we can do that here. How that's gonna directly affect corporations? Understand that so much of what happens in bad government here in Texas happens because the attention of the Texas voters is drawn to the circus in Washington DC. If I were to go down through the streets of town here and survey 100 people, and I ask them this question, "Who is your Speaker of the House?", how many of them are even gonna know the answer? How many of them are gonna say Nancy Pelosi?
Sure.
And how many of them are gonna say Dave Phelan? That's how you know. Because probably not one out of the 100 will know that Dave Phelan is the Texas Speaker of the House. Because our attention has been drawn to that sideshow in Washington DC. I was there pre-1996. I was that guy. I could tell you every nuance, every little story, all the kind of federal behind-the-scenes politics, and, and I, I couldn't have found my capital with a map. I mean, it's just the way that it is. But here's something funny that happens on these exit-type votes, is that when people begin to debate this publicly, right? It gets real when it goes on the ballot. Till then, it's just a thought experiment, okay? But when it goes on the ballot, things get real. And people start really debating this issue, and all kinds of questions are gonna come up. You know, what's gonna hap, what would happen post-Texas? How would this work? But you know, the uncomfortable question that I asked earlier, that also comes up. But, you know, the, "Would you even vote to join the Union?", all those things come up. But more importantly, the one question that I love for Texans to answer and examine is, well, how are we going to have government that's any better here in Texas? One of the reasons the establishment guys do not want this is because they know that it will cause a fundamental examination of all that they do. All that they are able to get by with, all the shenanigans, all the frat house antics, all the shady deals, all that gets brought to light. So, corporations are not bad, but corporations, just like politicians, can do bad things. And unless people like us are paying attention, they get away with it. Texas means no more distraction from Washington DC. The best office they can ever get is right here, and we don't have to worry about that. We can worry about what's happening right here close to the Capitol. So, that's, that's the only answer I got. Because that is the answer that fixes the problem. That's what makes Texas so powerful, is our ability to fix the problems that we have here at home. Anyone else?
I got a question. So, I understand January 6th was probably a bad thing for a lot of people in this room, but being in assembly and using our voice in the public at the Capitol is how they hear and how they move forward legislation. And so, my question is, the half a million people you were talking about, it's on their roles there, um, why are we not making our voices heard? I know they can get scary, and they can be very different, especially after what's just happened, but we are, like you said, we're gonna go all the way, and we're not gonna go at all. And so, you know, making a mass movement, being outside the legislature, letting them know what we are hoping, and now, not 5 years, 2 years from now, but now.
Sure.
How, how, I mean, how else can we get it moving forward unless they, you know, that that's what we want?
Well, you, you assume that, that showing up to the Capitol helps them know. And, and I will tell you, from working these guys for many, many sessions, those things don't faze them at all. Zero. You, you, let me tell you what motivates them. And it's exactly why we focused all of our intent this session in the districts, and, and on their Achilles' heel. There are two things that motivate them. The fear that they may not be reelected, and the fear that they won't have enough money to get reelected. You wanna know what really motivates them? That's it. That fear's just coming off to them by the people showing up there. It comes from the lobbyists that show up there that will cut them the checks in the campaign cycle. But how you combat that is you combat that in the districts. That's where it's gotta be done. That's exactly why we've organized in, in every doggone district in Texas and told everyone, "You need to call your legislature." T and M calls, we have a rally, guess what? We work, all of us, I'm pretty sure. So, weekdays are probably out. Understand that these guys leave typically on Thursday, gone Friday, gone Saturday, gone Sunday, when the vast majority of people of Texas could actually, you know, we're, we're the breadwinners, we actually are the ones who contribute to the economy, could go and shout, so we could go and, and all of us be there and shout at an empty building. And you know what? They've had that before. They had drakers and, and pro-illegal immigration people chanting in, in the, uh, in the, uh, House gallery a few sessions back, right? That happened. They had Planned Parenthood blanket that place all the time. They also had pro-gun advocates that showed up. And, and I will tell you this, no rally is gonna get, no rally got constitutional carry across the finish line, if it does get across the finish line, then that's a question mark. What got it done was smart, directed, and specific to these legislators that were digging in their heels. When they feel the pressure in their districts is when they move. When they think that it's gonna cost them an election, that's when they move. When they think it's gonna affect their campaign finance balance sheet, that's when they move.
I have a question, so...
Sorry, sir, let me go one more question, can we skip?
A lot of people that maybe think that this is just a, an idea, that something can go anywhere, though, once they see a mass amount of people, Texans, show up for an actual demonstration saying, "This isn't just something that we thought about, this is something we are after and is going to happen," is where I'm wondering, that show of actual, of citizens, of Texans showing up saying, "This isn't just, you know, a couple, 10 people inside a building talking like up the distance, so this is a mass amount of people." Because, you know, we see it in a bad way or a good way, we've seen it a lot in the past couple of years in this scenario, and I'm just wondering, you know, obviously there are bad things that can happen from that, depending on exactly what happens, but nobody can ignore it at that point, and wakes up people, because if you have enough people, it will be covered, even by a minister, either that might cover anything that's actually taken out, sorry.
Anywhere you can't sentence this?
No.
27, okay, under the wire. You're not, you're not wrong, right? There, there is a time and a place for that. But i, if you wanna do that, then I would suggest doing what we've been telling our members to do all along, which is gather together with people in your district, show up at their district offices or their place of employment, and show your support for Texas there. Because I'm gonna tell you, you can have a legislator out there, and you can put 400,000-plus people on the south steps of the Capitol, and they will tell you exactly what the calendar or the State Affairs Committee members told our folks that went to go visit, right, when they called. Well, you know, how many of those people were in my district? Even in their capacity as committee members, they're not just simply representing their district, they wanna know about people in their district. That's what they want. So, we could go out there, we could go scream at that building, I got a bullhorn, I'm not afraid, I've been up there, I got my head sunburnt on those south steps more than once, 'cause I'm too stupid to wear a hat sometimes, and we can do that. But, and, and there will be a time for that, but that time is not right now. The time right now is to make them feel the heat at home, so they can't go into their district without seeing a "Texas Now" sign in the yards, or seeing a billboard about "Texas Now," or having their neighbors come to them and go, "Hey, why didn't you sign onto this piece of legislation? Because I'm a Texas supporter." That's where the real work is done. That's where real social and political movements happen. Not at, at the, you know, the whitest sectors, but in our own backyards, in our own neighborhoods. That's where the real work is done. Anyone else? That's way in the back.
With the, with the current list that's out there, you know, in support, in not in support, if we do organize on a local level, and we go sit in front of those people, put the pressure on them, on them, do you think any of those will flip, or we just have to be closed?
Well, I, I'm gonna tell you, there are some that are on the bubble, but at this point, I, I think it doesn't matter how many of them are on the bubble, right? I think that the line, the battle lines have been drawn, and, and I think they're double daring us to do something about it. You know, how they typically deal with a lot of these policy issues like this, that, you know, that they're like this, where they get a lot of heat, and people call, and, you know, do all this sort of thing, is they're like, okay, we got our orders from the big three at the beginning of the session, not bringing controversial bills, so what we'll do is we'll string them along, we'll placate them a little bit, and then, you know, the session will be over with, and we'll say, "Hey, sorry, you know, maybe next time," and they'll go home, and they'll rub their mad spot, and when I come back into my district's campaign for the next cycle, they won't think all about it, because I'm their buddy. I told them if it would've got to me, I would've voted for it, right? That's what they do. But they have severely underestimated the desire of the people of Texas to have our independence. This ain't like all the other issues they've dealt with. You know, we're not trying to rename a highway, right? This is not that. This is the most important political decision of our lifetime, and these guys are perfectly willing to let the sands run out of the hourglass. And it's incumbent upon us to tell them that that is fully and wholly unacceptable. Because they would not listen to us in this session, means they cannot stay there for the next, and they have to know that we mean it. None of this, when the clock runs out, and we go home, and we wring our hands and be like, "Man, it was a good run, but I guess Joe Biden's cool now." You know, or, you know, it's time to go fix the federal government, it's Texas or bust. And if they're in the way, they gotta be out of the way. So, yeah, I mean, you can have those conversations with them, but let them know the Texas train's coming, and they should not have picked, they should have not picked the tracks to stand on. One more question?
I have a question, just to say, now, I'm a member of your organization.
What? Well, no, that you're a member of your organization.
Right.
Okay.
You know, don't be afraid to go out and talk to people, and they'll ask you questions. What does that mean? I have said loving parts of the day asking me about Australia, Texas. And I said, "No, no, no, it's about Texas independence." She said, "Oh, that sounds great, I like it." You know, you can find sufficient amount of support for the, uh, for the issue, so don't be afraid to talk to people. That's kind of what I love to do, awesome. In the past, I, I remember I knew that people were really for Davis, way back in 1992, that kind of, it swiped on, talking about Texas independence, but they've gone wild.
It set us back 10 years, no doubt about it.
Yeah, nuts, but, you know, this is a good legislative group, uh, so...
Well, thanks.
You know, why is enough support from people who don't think it's gonna be, so don't be afraid to drop the pot, please, about Texas independence, you know? That's all.
Hey, sometimes it's just a matter, and, and to your point, and I think this would be a good place to, to, uh, put an end on it tonight, but, but look, he, he's not wrong. It's about being unafraid and unapologetic. Remember what I said earlier? The greatest weapon that the opposition has had has been to make Texas supporters feel like they are alone, to marginalize them, to make them feel, to make us all feel alone. There's actually, it's actually a social phenomenon called atomization, and it's the way typically that tyrannical, or tyrants and tyrannical systems stay in power, is they atomize us. They don't let us come together, they make us think we're alone, they make us feel marginalized and fringe. And so, we don't organize because we think, "Well, I think this way, so I just better kind of keep him in the closet," right? But it really is about what he said. Have the conversation. Not a day goes by, not an event happens that we don't have someone come to us and say, "I've been looking for this my entire life." Ask the question, "Hey, if we were gonna have a vote on Texas becoming an independent country, would you vote on it?" Would you vote yes? Or ask them the question, "Hey, if Texas was brand-new independent today, would you vote to join the Union?" Start the conversation. Don't be afraid. This is not the time for secret agents or being bashful, this is the time for boldness, to speak truth, to help people understand that the only way that we're going to make a change is to make a change, and that the only way out is out. So, I wanna thank you guys so much tonight, you guys have been wonderful.
Thank you, guys. So, before we all head out, one second, I wanna ask you guys a question. How many people are in Drew Springer and Phil King's district?
Ugh.
Right? Do you know what Drew Springer and Phil King feel about this bill? We've run polling campaigns on HB 1215 and HB 1359. I guarantee you that those individuals have someone in this room who have listened to this entire presentation. I guarantee there's somebody in here that is reporting back to them. If not, they're gonna watch it on, on, on TV or whatever, when they, when this gets posted tomorrow. So, here's the thing, their stated position is that they're against this bill, that they're going to kill it in committee, which they've done, and that they're gonna see it, see it put to an end. So, Daniel's exactly right. So, we need to continue calling them and letting them know what we think about the idea of Texas sovereignty. Hey, our meeting is on Monday, wanna see you, thank you guys for coming out, thank you for Daniel.